All right, it is now seven o'clock, February 28th. Planning Board, 2019, welcome, all of you.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First item is the Continued Public Meeting Site Plan Administrative Review, 87 Glades Road. Would that be you, Mr. Morse?
Yes. Good evening. For the record, my name's Gregory Morse, I'm a registered engineer. With me is the property owner Doris Crery and our architect from Rockwood Design, Philip Baker. This is the second meeting we've had on this issue. This is a raise and reconstruct of a multiple-unit building down at 87 Glades Road. What exists at the site right now is a five-unit apartment building with eight bedrooms in it. We are proposing to rip that down and to put up a new building in its place. The new building would consist of three condominium units, each being two bedrooms. Last time I presented the plans to the board, you sent us on some errands. We've gone to the Board of Health, we've received our approval for the septic system at the site. We've gone to the Conservation Commission. We go back in front of Conservation Commission next week, and I expect their approval on the project. And you sent us to the Design Review Committee for architectural review of the building. I'm gonna let Phil speak to the revisions that were made to the architectural plans, which was a revised set that was sent to you, and I believe you have a revised memo from your Design Review Committee.
So at the Design Review Committee, we met probably three weeks ago?
Yeah, two, two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks ago. So the main concern, I think, at the last meeting was the mass of the building. So we tried to address that with some different fenestration, as well as some different roofline techniques to draw the building downward and not seem so tall and very forward on the street. So what we did was, we removed the garage bays and the skirting underneath, so now it would just be open piles, where the cars could actually drive under. We also stepped back the right-hand volume, so we'd have a kind of a step facade in the front, and also put a gable on the left-hand side, and then did some pop-out balconies to kind of break up that monotonous tall wall feature on the front. So that gave better amenities for each of the units, so they would each have pop-out balconies. And then we also add sliders as well for fenestration to walk in and out of those units onto the balconies. So we thought with a lot of these moves, it kind of limited the mass, as well as in the rear elevation and the left-side elevation, we added a couple more windows in the stairwell based upon the Design Review comments, as well as a kind of angled roof covering over the front door in the rear as well, just to kind of add a little more interest, as well as break up that, you know, tall wall as well. You know, we addressed lighting that they were adding on to make sure that the building had proper lighting, downloading underneath so that the neighbors wouldn't be getting any sort of light shined upon them. And we also located where trash bins would be going, what type of windows we are looking at, and also what type of siding, roofing. We tried to address a lot of different concerns the Design Review Committee had, and really put them into this set to kind of knock it out and get everything they were looking for on this final architectural set. If you look on sheet A 2.2, that actually shows 87 Glades, which will be built along with 87 Glades to the right. So they're kind of, they're kind of like A 2.2. And that kind of shows the brother-sister kind of lineage we're trying to achieve with 87 and 85.
85 is existing?
85 is a tear-down that is gonna be rebuilt as a single-family, already approved. That's already approved.
So this is from their plans?
Yes, correct.
I have a question. Where's the other way out?
So there's only one means of egress. So the main stairwell is a two-hour fire-rated egress, so you only need one means of egress if it is a two-hour fire-rated enclosure.
Okay, that sounds a little unusual. Usually you need a way in and a way out.
So based on today's code, you can have a three-story building that is fire-rated with a two-hour enclosure.
Okay.
With the travel distances.
What makes a two-hour enclosure?
It's just the construction method of the wall type that is actually built so it's a two-hour. Once you go into that vestibule, that's the last thing that would technically burn if there was a fire. So you would be in that enclosure, and you're able to go out of the building.
Well, for the record, I have, I don't care about that part. I have a real problem with another way out. I do, and I, just for the record, I have a problem with it.
Okay. Good.
Karen?
Yeah, and we were able, we were able to address that concern by saying that in the, if you got, if the board chooses to approve this, we've conditioned upon meeting the state building code as well. So that would have to be, if when they're going for a building permit, if they determine that two means of egress are required, you've already conditioned that by saying it has to meet the state building code.
Yep.
But the board-
That kind of goes with, even if we don't say that, that-
That's, yes.
It goes-
Goes without saying.
Yep.
It goes without saying, but we just, we put it in for absolute clarity.
And you're only, you're only allowed the one means if you're, if it's a fully sprinkler building, which it will be. So it's a sprinkler building with the one means, it's two-hour fire rate, so it's kind of a, it's a pro and a con. You're getting the fire sprinklers, the one means. If you don't fire sprinkler, you can have two means. And not fire sprinklers, you're getting a sprinkler building with one means and a two-hour fire-rated enclosure. It's an either-or in the code, it's just a matter of, you know, design-wise of what fits the site more. If we drop another set of stairs down, then parking would be back on the street, and we're trying to get all the parking off the street underneath the building, so it's, we're trying to work with, you know, a bunch of different facets to get, you know, parking under and off the street, and also getting one means and working with the today's code to make sure everything is on the up and up.
So this, you said it's fully sprinkled, so it's a, it's like a dry-pipe system or something?
Uh, yeah, that would be more of an MEP question. I'm not really 100% sure what type of system we'll be going in, but it'll be up to today's code to, that'll be all, you know, ironed out when the building permit is submitted.
So the one means of egress for a three-story building requires a two-hour fire-rated enclosure as well as sprinklers in the building?
Yes, correct.
All right, um, Bill?
No, I, you said there was an updated memo from Hal?
Yes, it's-
It was the revised memo-
Okay.
From dated 2/13, and then the applicant addressed the comments there in red, so that you could see that they had addressed the Design Review Committee comments.
Okay.
You asked the Design Review Committee to look at the massing-
Yep.
And how it fits into the neighborhood.
Same how they do.
Okay, thank you. Let me, give me a minute in, let me take that.
Yes. All right, um, Ben? Are you all, do you have comments, or do you want to wait a minute?
Um, I'm okay right now. Are 85 and 87 going to be built at the same time? Are they somehow related properties?
Uh, well, they're related by owner.
Only related by owner, but I'll be not necessarily selling them to the same person. I mean, it could be a private individual wants 85, right. I do, yes.
Okay.
And they both got storm damaged, one more so than the other, in the January storms last year.
Patty?
No.
They're still reading.
Sorry, I didn't change the look at this before.
You're selling both properties.
Yes, yes, yep.
Okay.
I had originally thought I would maybe tackle the project, but since I turned 76 today, I have kind of decided it's a little too late for me to-
Happy birthday.
Have this be my project.
Happy birthday, yeah.
Thank you. Little too much.
Little too much.
So, but 85 is not included in this?
No, we don't-
No, no, it's not. I just wanted to show you from the Design Review Committee comments, I just want to show you the kind of heritage of the two buildings side by side.
They're very close together.
They're very close together, yes. Just to show like how we're kind of mimicking a style, you know, from one building to the other.
And now, what's on the other side of 87? That's an itty-bitty little house, and what's gonna happen with that? You don't own that one, do you?
No, we do not.
No, I don't. No.
This, this bottom picture, and there's the small house.
Yes.
Yep.
I mean, that, that stays there. The benefit with the new building, right now, the existing building at 87 actually encroaches over the lot line to that property. The new building gets pulled three feet further away than what exists.
Plus 89 and 91 are owned by the same person. And 91 is a three-story house, which they went ahead and did, so you do have that one smaller house, but I'm sure they're probably planning on, you know, upping it.
Doing something.
Yep.
Well, it will be an improvement.
Yes, it will be.
Definitely.
And I'm sure they'll be happy to have me off their land. [laughing]
Was the, I'm sorry, did you guys have questions?
No, go.
Phil's ready, and I'll, I've got a couple of questions. One, there, I noticed there were comments from Abutters around the septic system and the proximity to their lot line, et cetera. Was that all a result?
Yes, the Board of Health approved the septic system aside. So we asked for several local upgrade approvals. These are all tight lots down there. We reduced the size of the septic system from an eight-bedroom down to a six-bedroom system. We're putting a breakout liner between the proposed septic system and the Abutters' property line, and that was approved without appeal.
What's a breakout liner?
Sure. It's an impervious liner that you would put between the lot line and the soil absorption system to prevent the horizontal migration of water.
So essentially forces everything down to a certain depth?
Correct.
The, the one thing, I think you've done a nice job sort of improving the look, and Phil, so I appreciate you working with the Design Review Committee to do that. The one question I have is really the, the little cover over the main entrance.
Mm-hmm.
It looks a little sort of stuck on, and I wondered whether you considered like a gable-end cover as opposed to a shed roof?
Yeah, yeah, we're open to different interpretations. It's tough, too, especially on a drawing-wise, because it's an angled volume, so it's a little bit tougher, I guess, to draw essentially on the plans, but it could be a gable or it could be a shed. We just want to get something to kind of break up that long volume. So either or, either option, we're open to critiquing.
I guess it would be my opinion that the, the gable, it doesn't have to come out very far, but the gable look is more in keeping with what you've designed here than kind of what looks a bit stuck on as a, as shed roof. But, and then-
Yeah, I think the only thing that bothered me a little bit, a quick read is, I guess you commented about making this thing redesigned for the new, new owner?
Yeah.
I wasn't sure that I understood that.
Yeah, I just picked up on that, so, I'm not sure I understand it either, the comment about the new owner.
So, so we were just getting at it in my kind of notations on the memo, was that, so what we tried to do is, on our set, since Doris potentially will be selling it to another owner, is that we're still gonna be involved in the process to the next owner. So we tried to do is that we specified everything on the plans, the windows, the siding, and try to have an equal, but it's tougher to just spec Anderson windows, you know, so we tried with Anderson windows or equal, because every builder has different, you know, providers that they work with. So what we're trying to do is, is that not try to, I guess, pigeonhole one, the next owner into one type of window, or, so that's all I was trying to get at, is saying that it's an, is or equal, meaning that it's gonna be an Anderson 400 or equal series window.
But six over one, you'll still have a six over one?
Yes, six over one is, yeah, definitely the way I have it drawn.
You, Mrs. Crery, aren't building these buildings.
No, I'm not.
Somebody else is going to be building it.
Right. Somebody else will be building it.
Correct.
I'm fine not specifying the manufacturer of the window.
Right, that's-
Right.
In terms of the look and feel that we've created here, I don't want somebody coming in.
Oh, no, 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 that's, I was just saying, it was more the, the actual type, the six over one is fine, it's just more the manufacturer, essentially. I just didn't want to put a stipulation on it has to be Anderson, just because it, every, you know.
I can live with that. That's just, it's a different reading than I got out of your paragraph.
Karen, but we've been able to, we can address that in conditions, too. We can say all work has to be in substantial conformance to the plan, which that would, I mean, that's what they show on the plan.
Yes, correct.
And we've also have it, we've inserted another condition, or a draft for the board to consider, that the building design professional shall certify that the building has been constructed in substantial conformance with the approved design plans. So we've tried to cover it that way, knowing that it might be sold. It's, it's really no different than what you do on any project, because you actually say it should be constructed according to the approved plans.
Right, definitely.
I think it was more, I was with Phil, as I read the note, it sounded like you were-
Well, the Design Review Committee was very worried about that, that it would get-
No, I get it. I think I understand your concern, I think, I think that's fine.
And that was the only thing, everything else was fine with, you know, it was just saying that we just don't want, because we saw Anderson in there, we kind of said, oh, well, we don't want to have to have it be that detailed, where it's just gonna be an or an equal, meaning it's gonna be Anderson 400 equivalent, essentially.
And what did you specify for the siding?
Uh, right now, we have weathered gray shingle siding, so just as you'd see down that area, so that would be something that would be typical where you'd want to build weathered gray.
Yep.
Cedar, cedar siding.
Yeah, cedar siding, yeah, correct.
Ben?
Um, yeah, so I guess, in terms of our purview on this hearing right now, with site plan review, I would vote favorably. I think that the changes that have been made are positive, and you've done what you can to make this project fit on the site. This is more just for the record, my own opinion. I do have two issues, not related to site plan review, but with this development in general. One is that I still don't feel, I guess, one first issue is administrative. One, I still don't feel that this project necessarily fits the underlying zoning, nor the feel of the neighborhood, this large multifamily development. However, I understand that this has already had the Section 6 finding under ZBA, and, you know, all of that has a right to exist, and the zoning board of bills have found in favor of the project. So just wanted to point that out. And then the other thing is more in terms of a planning perspective, which is that we need to start thinking about how we're redeveloping our coastal zone, particularly low-lying areas that are prone to flooding. I just, obviously, that goes way beyond just one redevelopment project, but it's something that, as a planning board, I'm very cognizant of, and I think we need to start looking into further.
Okay. Anybody else on the board?
Well, I, I appreciate the comments from Ben, and I guess I would say, in this, in this context, what would you, how would you do something different on the coastal zone piece?
I think that's more probably the master plan, and then update the zoning bylaws from, from that.
So you're not suggesting a change to what they've done?
No.
Whether it should be developed or not there?
Yeah, it's more philosophical and not specific to this plan in front of us, yeah.
I, I do think the notion that it's up is important here, right? Because that's definitely gonna get flooded.
Sure.
Right?
Right. The one thing I would say to Ben, having been involved with all that I have over the years here in the town for flood, is the fact that going the three to four feet higher is really critically important for a lot of reasons. One, it's when you get the break in your flood insurance. Just being at the elevation is considered the minimum, and therefore they charge you the same as if you hadn't elevated. The other thing is by going the three and a half to four feet, if there is such a thing as sea level rise, and we all have to deal with it, you're now protected going forward. So I think that's a real positive, and both of these buildings are. And a half a foot counts toward a four-foot reduction with your NFIP insurance.
Yeah, and I fully, I respect that you guys, you know, are choosing to elevate and get things out of the flood zone and all that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest two things, and just, one is that there is sea level rise.
Right, right.
I mean, there's definitely evidence of that. I think the second thing, in terms of climate change and sea level rise, is how high will it go, right?
Right.
And how much of what's, you know, on Glades Road right now is gonna be underwater at some point in time. The one thing that does, so it sort of pointed out to me is that your infrastructure is gonna be subject to flooding. Your septic lines and, and the town water lines, I would guess. Is there anything that can be done to sort of protect it, I'm thinking particularly protect the town from having to deal with those?
Sure.
How is the, how does the water, how does the water get in?
I've got a town sewer.
Well, a town sewer wouldn't help either, because you gotta run a pipe down to connect it.
That's, that's an issue that-
Where are the pipes running?
Yeah, so right, right now, the septic pipes themselves run under the proposed building, and we're proposing a leaching system in between the pilings under the building. The water pipes connect out to Glades Road, to the town's infrastructure under Glades Road.
I'm particularly talking about from the ground up into the structure. How does it get up there?
Okay, from ground level up to the first floor, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm not exactly sure how it would, it would go in. We do have a utility area in the back corner. So we have a cantilevered utility area, as well as if you go to the pile plan on S1, we have a raised sprinkler valve platform above, so-
S1.
S1's the last page of the document, so there's a DW there, which is dumbwaiter, and then above that, we have a sprinkler valve platform above. So that's pretty much where a lot of the utilities would go. Or the back area, we have a raised utility area in the back right-hand corner where the jog is on the side. So it's an either or, depending on really how they want to bring it in. So it just depends on the contractor and how they're gonna bring it up and in.
So can I ask, you normally flood for the back, right, not for the front? The water comes from the marsh, not from the ocean.
Um, well, the only time we came across from the ocean was in the storm January the 4th, and it came in on both sides. So at that time, the highest elevation by what we could see on the property after that was about two feet to three feet, in that range, in the sense of waves. And this house, just to give you an idea, on the elevation now is six more feet above that before you would get to the finished floor, so.
How do you keep the pipes from freezing?
You act, I live in a house right now that's nine-something feet off the ground. My pipes are wrapped in a number, they have heat tape, then they have foam around the heat tape, and then they're also encapsulated in wood and insulation, and it's been fine. So that's the-
Are the parking, where the cars going to be, are those also elevated?
No, that's at existing ground level, so, yeah.
You're gonna park the cars on top of the leaching system?
Yes, you're gonna park on top of the leaching system.
You do now, at Texas.
Yes, we do.
Yep. That's how a lot of those elevated houses sound that way, that's how they all are.
Karen, anything else?
No, I mean, we've, they met with the Design Review, they met the criteria, I think they've done a good job taking care of the massing, and as Greg said, the Board of Health has approved it, and Conservation is due to looking to close, I think, on Monday night.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anything else from the board? All right. I still stand by my entrance and exit, but I will not vote against this, okay? All right. Anybody from the public? Who's here from the public?
I guess?
Nobody. All right.
Based on the site plan for proposed raise and rebuild 87 Glades Road, assessed as possible 5-3-28, Citrus Mass, dated 4/17/18, with revisions through 12/27/18 by Morse Engineering Company, Inc. Plans entitled Query Residence 87 Glades Road, Citrus Mass, 02066, revised date 2/19/2019 by Rockwood Design, Inc. A memo, 2/13/19, a revised dated, to the Planning Board from Hal Stokes, Chairman of the Design Review Committee. Comments from the Commission on Disabilities received February 11, 2019. Comments from Rockwood Design in response to the Design Review Committee memo, and testimony provided. The Planning Board appines that the requirements of the Town of Citrus zoning bylaw, Section 770.6, site plan standards of review, have been met to a degree consistent with the use of the site for the purpose committed in the regulations of the district in which the land is located, and to approve the site plan administrative review for 87 Glades Road with the following conditions. Number one, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions or the state building code, all site work and building work shall be in substantial conformance with the plans entitled Proposed Raise and Rebuild 87 Glades Road, assessed as possible 5-3-28, Citrus Mass, dated 4/17/18, with revisions through 12/27/18 by Morse Engineering Company, Inc. Plans entitled Query Residence 87 Glades Road, Citrus Mass, 02066, revised dated 2/19/2019 by Rockwood Design Incorporated. Two, approval is contingent upon all local approvals being obtained from the Town of Citrus in compliance with the state building code. Materials and details of construction shall meet all the requirements of the DPW, Board of Health, Fire Department, Building Department, Commission on Disabilities, and Conservation Commission, and other town agencies. When the site plan administrative review requires approval permitting or licensing from any local, state, or federal agency, such required approval permitting or licensing is deemed a condition of the Town of Citrus Planning Board's approval of the site plan. Any required upgrades on site for sewer or water shall be at the owner's expense. Three, no further expansion of the multifamily dwelling is allowed without further review of the Planning Board. This approval is limited to three residential units and six bedrooms. Four, the building design professional shall certify that the building has been constructed in substantial conformance with the approved design plans, and the site design professional shall certify that the completed work is in conformance with the approved site plan prior to issuing of a certification of completion. Number five, all parking shall be in conformance with the zoning bylaw. There are six parking spaces proposed to be provided on-site under the house. Should the number of parking spaces change, the applicant or any future owners are required to return to the Planning Board for a determination of conformance to this approval. Six, construction work shall begin not prior to 7:00 a.m. weekdays and 8:00 a.m. on Saturdays, and shall cease no later than 7:00 p.m. or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal or federal holidays. Construction includes idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site, and all other construction activities. Seven, no parking on the street is allowed. This includes construction vehicles, equipment that shall not idle, be parked, stored, loaded, or unloaded in the street. Number eight, the project shall comply with applicable ADA and Massachusetts Architectural Access Board requirements. If a lift is needed, the applicant shall provide his location to the Planning Board prior to construction. Nine, any lighting installed shall be downlighting to not shed light on the abutting properties. Ten, trash barrels are to be located under the building, hidden for view of the neighbors as shown on the pile plan. Eleven, a balcony utility area shall be provided on the right elevation above the flood plain to hold mechanical equipment. And twelve, the town planner is to be notified upon completion of construction.
Is there a second?
Got a question on eight. Is having a lift affect the same fires, firewall for the entrance?
Uh, no, so the lift would be in a, in a separate location on, on the building plans. If we needed a lift, we're actually going for the AAB next week, and hopefully get approved for a variance to not have a lift, because we are in a flood zone, so we're hoping the board sees that it would be remiss of them to put a lift in an area that will potentially flood out, you know, depending on storms and whatnot.
So don't we need to know more than just the location for it? I guess that's for Karen.
How would it change the design if you had a lift?
It wouldn't really change, they would essentially want to go for the board for a variance and not put a lift in. What they might require is to put a semi-permanent lift, there wouldn't be an actual lift built, it would be one to be brought in and out, you know, for the time being, if someone was to buy a unit on the first floor. The first floor- The first floor unit is already designed for group one to be handicap accessible if someone was to buy that unit, so that's already designed and completed. And if the AAB wants us to, we could provide a, access within the actual stairwell enclosure that someone will be able to ride up the stairs to get to their unit potentially. But we're going to go for the variance to not have anything, and they're going to dictate to us what, what they would like.
I have a question on the parking. Where, where are you supposed to park when you're doing construction?
Yeah, I was going to say actually the same thing myself, so.
It's very narrow, don't you?
It's very narrow, yeah.
Most people do it on, if you do.
Yeah, they park on the street.
They park on the street.
When they're constructing the building.
Yeah, if, number, number seven, if there was some wording regarding legal parking on the street, because people do park on the street right now.
Right.
And-
They park there at night, right?
People do park there at night.
They do.
They park there during the daytime, and, you know, imagine you have a FedEx truck pull up in front of your house and run a delivery up to your front door, they park on the street.
Yep.
That wouldn't be allowed with item number seven as currently written. We do provide all six parking spaces for these units under the building, but street parking is, is present at all of these construction sites.
Well, I think the intent was to not take up parking that might otherwise be used by permanent construction vehicles there all day for the next six months or whatever, right?
Right, I think-
I think that was the kind of more of the intent than the occasional, you know, somebody drops a FedEx package off or something, right?
Sure, or more, more importantly would be the lumber truck comes, typically it comes on a flatbed truck, and they take a little forklift off the back of the truck, and the forklift runs the lumber onto the site. You know, that truck might be parked in the road temporarily while the forklift is running the lumber back and forth.
Well, I think common sense needs to-
Prevail?
Prevail here. What we don't want is the plasterer parked out front for the duration of the day. When somebody's making a delivery and they're unloading and they're leaving, it's common sense. We just don't want anybody parked there for 12 hours.
We like that interpretation.
Well, we can add some language that we've added on some other projects.
All right.
Okay.
Without a police deal, without a police detail if deter-, if, if warranted.
All right. Bye. Which is just kind of narrow, don't you?
I'm so much your asking for a waiver solves my problem with the lift.
I put the condition in because it's possible that if they don't get a waiver from the, a variance from the AAB, it could have a design implication.
Well, maybe it should just say the project shall comply if, if they don't, if they can't comply, then they're going to have to come back here. Right. In other words, I think what Bill's saying is we're not sort of approving a, a lift without kind of knowing how that's going to affect the overall plan or design.
Better design that the expectation is not going to give a variance.
Right.
Yeah, that's going to be in the sun porch.
So you actually just remove the second sentence, right?
Okay, yeah.
And then if, if they don't get a variance, so I, I assume that complying with Massachusetts Architectural Access Board includes complying with whatever variance seizure they have if they issue the variance. If they don't issue the variance, you've got to comply with whatever it says.
We, we do, yeah, so they're, they're going to dictate to us what they would prefer, essentially. So it's either, we're, we're applying for nothing, and they're going to tell us either thumbs up, thumbs down. If it's a thumbs down, I'm going to say we would prefer this, and then we'll put it into the plans if they require something. Yeah, and, and if it is, if we do have to put a temporary lift, it's going to come up into the sun porch, so nothing would change design-wise, it would be going up into its own separate volume, and, and that's, and that's it.
So this lift is just for construction?
No.
No, this, this lift is-
This is ADA.
Is for ADA, yeah, to, to make, but we've, we've done these before in the past in Marshville and other towns that when you're in a flood zone, they, a lot of times they don't require you to put it in because you are in a flood zone, it can be washed out, so putting a mechanical device in a flood zone, they're not really, they don't really want to see that. So we get a variance and they, they approve you based upon the fact that they don't want to put one in, they know that, it's not like you're at first floor level, they know you're almost nine feet above grade, so for them, they see it as someone that is handicapped may not be prone to buy this unit just because you are down in, in the flood zone area.
So maybe this should say if a variance is approved, the applicant should provide that variance to the planning board, and the planning board will then make a decision as to whether, and we'll leave, we could leave it to the town planner to make a decision whether she should bring it back to the full border or not, right? If, if it's a material change.
Well, variance is not approved.
Right.
No, if it's not approved, then they have to comply.
Yeah, we have to comply, and it's, it's state building code, so it's the building commissioner, they can't give us a permit if we're not complying.
Right.
So it's kind of, to come back to you, we have to go through to the building sector anyways, so it's something that we have to show if they-
Oh, I see what you're saying, that you're saying if it's not approved, then they have to modify something, then they're going to have to bring that back too. Or if it's approved with modifications, that's, that's what I, that's what I was saying, if the variance is approved and it has some kind of modification, right?
So what do you want to say? If a variance is approved and-
No, let's just say any changes as a result, any changes to the current design as a result of, you know, complying, right? Shall be provided to the town planner.
You mean exterior changes?
Yes.
Whatever, yeah, whatever changes they, they're proposing, right?
Because, I mean, if it's coming up inside the sunroom, which is already shown on the plan of the exterior there, if you look on the first floor, you'll see it at the rear, and it abuts the stairway.
Yeah, sheet, sheet A3. So the lift would actually come into that sunroom space in the, the left-hand corner.
But that's up on the first floor.
That's, yeah, so it'd be on the lower level, on the parking level, coming up into the first floor.
So doesn't that affect access to parking?
No, it wouldn't, because the parking actually stops before, that's where some of our trash barrels will be going, that nothing affects anything if the lift is installed in that location, but what we're looking at is that we're, we're getting a variance to not put any lift in, and they're going to dictate what they want for us, if anything. So they might tell us, all we want is a, a lift to actually be onto the stairwell, you know, when you ride up the stairwell. They may request that, which isn't a change to drawings, it's just a note saying there's going to be a, a lift associated with the stairwell. So it's, with the AAB, they dictate to us what they want. But we're applying for nothing, and they're going to tell us otherwise.
But if you put it in the stair-
Or they're going to say, you know, we're not approving the variance, right?
Yeah, and then they would-
Comply, right?
And then they say, they would say comply, and we have to put a lift in, you know, and then we put the lift in the sunroom.
But if you put it in the stairwell, then it affects the people up on the second and third floor that have to go by it to go up the stairs.
Probably affects a two-hour timeframe.
Yeah.
No, it, it wouldn't affect anyone that's in the stairwell, it would be its own separate, it would latch on and come right up the stairwell. So it wouldn't affect anyone exiting, because you're already in, it's, it's a folding unit, it's up against the wall. It wouldn't affect anybody, because you're already in that two-hour fire rated stair enclosure, so once you're in it, you have two hours.
What if you said something like, the, the current design reflects, is, is predicated on getting a variance for the lift? Right, if that variance is not granted, then what I want to see is to come back to the planning board.
I guess my point is, since it's not changing the exterior of the house, whether it's inside the stairwell or it comes up inside the sun porch, the house on all four sides is staying the same, it's not changing.
It's that perfect argument for not putting one in, I guess.
Yeah, and also to Doris's point as well, we can't, they can't, the person who might potentially buy the property can't get a building permit without the building commissioner signing off, he will not sign off if we don't meet the criteria. If we don't have a variance, we have to have a lift, and we have to show a lift.
How does he know they need these variants?
So, so we, we supply the documents saying that we have gotten or not gotten a variance. So if we have not gotten, we will show a lift or, or the, whatever the variance approves, so they might tell us to put the ramp to go up, and so the inside of the stairwell, they may tell us, that's what I'm saying, is that we don't really know until we go, and that's where we have the meeting, we're on the docket, and that's kind of how we're going to leave it. The building commissioner, I said, can't give us a permit without that document and telling us no lift or telling us to put a lift in, so to come back to the board, we're kind of doing things twice to get the same thing approved.
But I would feel more comfortable if I knew what the Mass. Board said to them.
Yeah.
Regarding the variance.
Well, let's see, we'll give them a copy of the table.
Well, the other way to handle it is just to have them submit the final decision from the board to the town planner.
Yeah, yes.
And if, we'll leave it to Karen's judgment to determine whether, you know, we need to address it at a, at a meeting, or she can just send it to all of us and we can make a determination whether we think we need to hear anything else about it. And that way, regardless of what they've said, we'll get, we'll get the final determination, right?
All right, now, now, going back to, what is the wording that you want then for number eight?
Karen's going to write that.
Okay.
She's writing it now.
All right, and what about seven? No parking on the street is allowed.
I, I was going to say something like, no long-term, or extended parking, or something-
Extended, all right, no extended.
Can we, can we put the condition at number eight that we have to provide the document from the AAB before a building permit is issued? So that it covers you, that, we have to submit a document anyway, so it has to be submitted, and that kind of covers us that-
Sure.
Is the fire department notified of special things like that?
I don't know what the comment law is.
One by one on those bases.
Okay.
What's that?
One by one, the owner tells the fire department.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Number seven?
So what if we have to worry, the applicant shall submit the decision from the AAB prior to the building permit for conformance, for the planning board to determine conformance to the site, site plan review?
The only answer is just to put waiver, application waiver, whatever, what was the first part of that?
The project shall, well, the, the project shall comply with applicable ADA and Mass. Architectural Access Board requirements. The applicant shall submit the decision from the AAB prior to a building permit to the, for the planning board to determine conformance to the site plan review.
And it changed where it says decision, any, any waiver decision, and that would do it?
So.
Yeah, because they're either going to decide, I assume it's all the same.
Because whatever they tell them to do internal to the building, keeping the four sides-
Yep.
Same.
Right, exactly.
Yep.
Do that, so then it, it wouldn't affect anything that we'd want to do.
Right.
That's correct.
It's decided you do, it's going to come up in the middle of the back.
Yes, correct.
Right.
Yep.
And that's the root cause for a waiver.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you for your patience.
No, of course.
Anything else? Steve?
Well, number seven, we said no extended-
Extended parking.
During construction? Or, should we say that?
During destruction.
No, construction, not destruction.
Hey!
Well, it's actually, it's both, yeah.
Yeah.
It is.
But to Karen's point about like, there's something about police detail, because I could also see like if they have to have a crane parked in the street and they're lifting a beam or something, that could, in the middle of summer.
They're going to have to have a police detail for that, so, I mean, I mean, right now, all the parking for the development is supposed to be on-site, and that's what the ZBA found in their decision. So this just says no parking is allowed on the street, and that includes construction vehicles. And all, if we add without a police detail, if warranted at the end, then the police department determines if the detail is necessary.
Is it realistic to expect that all construction vehicles are going to be on-site?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. This thing is way too small for that to happen.
But they have a, they, there is a driveway, they, they're going to have to be, or find a different place to park, it's, it's a problem with control, controlling construction vehicles.
It's a right-of-way.
It's a right-of-way.
It's a right-of-way.
It's a right-of-way.
There's nothing-
It's, it's a right-of-way that has a septic system under it for the property next door. We can't compromise that septic system, and we can't restrict access in that right-of-way. Construction traffic at some point in time is going to have to park in the street, and I think as Ann, the chairman, pointed out, you know, using common sense on when that construction vehicles are parked there, I think is going to be necessary. The cement trucks are going to pull up to that location, they're not going to come down this 10-foot wide right-of-way.
Right, I, I would agree with that, and if the police department determines there's a detail necessary for those cement trucks, then that's what will happen.
Yes.
I'm really more addressing extended parking by craftsmen who are coming there to work, you know, carpenters, et cetera. We don't want extended parking up and down the street there, right? And that may mean they have to find another place to park and walk over or something, you know?
Or unload their stuff and go to that roundabout further along and park there, and that's the way it would have to be.
Understood.
Okay?
So can we say this includes reasonable provisions for vehicles' equipment that shall not idle, be parked, stored, loaded, or unloaded in the street without a police detail if warranted? That way you get some reasonableness, but again, if the police get calls, they're going to go down there.
Right.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What's wrong with us following the town codes? I'm sure they have them now, I mean, I did, when I lifted my house, you know, on Oceanside, you know, there was equipment that didn't fit, you know, in my parking area.
I, I'm not sure I understand your question. You say the town codes, what do you mean?
Well, they let people park in the street, but the, the problem here is, it's very narrow up there, very, very narrow. Access is difficult, to say the least, and there are other people there besides you all, and we all have to be cognizant of the neighbors, et cetera, et cetera. So if, if the cement truck shows up, it's, it's going to be in the middle of the road, and if a detail is necessary, then it is necessary. If the plasterer shows up, he unloads his equipment, and he goes and he parks someplace else. Oceanside-
I think they'll do that.
We can only hope that they will do that.
Well, that's what we're trying to encourage people to do.
That's what we're trying to do. Oceanside is much wider, and there's, there was more space down there than there is up in Minut.
And if you do this in the summertime, it's really going to be crying.
It's going to be horrible.
And it, we're not picking on you, right?
No, we're not.
No, I'm just-
We do this with every construction project, right? We don't want people parking on the street who are working on the site, right? That's, that's really just part of this.
You can tell your tenants park on the street even though you tell them not to.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's-
That's another issue that we're not going to go to.
Yes, supposedly.
We can try to legislate that, but we're not enforcing that, so.
And there are supposedly streets that are no parking streets that are on the website, on the town website, so that has to be, you know, enforced.
Yeah.
It's just having met with parking on a project yesterday with the deputy chief and an officer, I'm, you know, I'm, we're very sensitive to this issue.
And so are the neighbors.
Right.
Get rid of the word "right", get rid of "no" in what minimum. Get rid of the word "no".
And put "minimum".
Put "minimal parking on the street" is allowed.
Minimum.
Right, that's, that's good. That works for when you're unloading.
That's good.
Yeah, that's great.
That way there, when the people complain and the cops go out and try and issue tickets, they'll sit there and blame it on us because we screwed them up in the language.
Okay. I'll entertain a second as amended.
I'll second as amended.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I got my birthday gift.
I'll keep this as well.
Do you need this picture back?
No. Did you bring a cake?
Yeah, no, I didn't, they're the kind of cakes. All right, we have, you've got this, we're a little running up there behind, but that's okay. 7:30, we had a site plan administrative review that's being continued for, which one was?
Seventeen A.
Seventeen A.
Well, seventeen A.
Well, yeah.
That's here.
Where is it?
Okay, I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public meeting for the site plan administrative review for the municipal water treatment plant, while seventeen A, ninety, and ninety-six tack factory pod drive until March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven thirty PM, and to continue the tie for action for filing with the town clerk until March twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on, we have a Form A for fifty-eight Crescent, who's here for that?
I am Mayor Chairman.
Joy of Rapture, okay. Mr. Maribito, so nice to see you this evening.
Thank you. Likewise. The A and R plan we submitted for fifty-eight Crescent Ave. is a, um, the final plan that was approved by the land court. We have monumented the site, they've, they've reviewed our engineering calculations, and they sent it back to us to have the planning board endorsement, um, added to the plan.
We have a plan?
Yeah, I got it right here.
The plan, the board has endorsed this plan before, as, uh, part of the site was, um, unregistered land, and this, as Paul said, it's merely what the land court has determined, so it's just, uh, for filing with the, uh, land court.
Has anything changed?
Has anything changed?
The land court determined, did they change something?
The land court changed it by just a few square feet, which is just an rounding of the perimeter numbers.
So, you mean the lot areas changed?
Yeah, the lot areas changed, they reversed themselves, the last digit reversed, uh, by one on each one.
Okay.
Okay, so it's no big deal?
That's the only change?
All right. I have to say, that house at fifty-eight is ginormous.
I haven't seen it, to be honest with you.
Unbelievable.
Can't miss it.
They needed extra space to get the extra side for hallway.
Really?
How's it look?
Huge.
Huge.
Huge. Massive. Absolutely massive, and tell me that there are only two people living there. Probably one.
For hell.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, please, I do digress.
I move to endorse as approval not required a plan of land in the town of Situate, Mass. Fifty-eight Crescent Ave. being this division of the lot shown on L.C. Plan four-three-one-one-eight-a, prepared by Ross Engineering Company, for applicant owner fifty-eight Crescent Avenue, LLC, dated November twentieth, two thousand eighteen. As the division of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision, because it shows every lot on the plan has frontage of at least a distance presently required under the Situate zoning bylaw on the public way of Crescent Avenue.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, approve minutes, uh...
Can I actually take one thing out of order while Mr. Maribito is still here?
Yes.
We have a withdrawal request for, um, Zero Beacon Road.
I move to accept the applicant's request to withdraw the A and R for Zero Beacon Road without prejudice.
All right, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night, Mayor Chairman.
I was gonna keep you here until nine-thirty.
Thank you.
Anyone here looking for the ZBA?
Hopefully not. Okay.
He's got a note to say that they're in the library, so...
They are in the library.
Okay, we have, uh, minutes?
I move to approve the minute, the meeting minutes for January twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Alus.
You do an incredible job. You really do. Okay, accounting.
I move to approve the requisition of one thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighty-six cents to Harriman Associates for the master plan.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Liaison reports.
ZBA's meeting right now.
There you go.
It's mostly residential. It's at the library. It's mostly residential applications, but they are also discussing the two fortyBs, the Herring Brook Meadow and, um, Sock Bridge Woods, so I'll keep you guys, I'll check what's...
That's who the zoning board's looking for, they're looking for Herring Brook.
Found it yet?
They haven't found them.
Oh.
They're supposed to be in the library.
Oh, well. They're in the water somewhere. Okay, um, EDC, met the other night. The big question is, Greenbush, not Greenbush so much as North Situate, people are concerned about North Situate and what's going on or not going on, as the case may be. So, we're going to further discuss it, looking for regional sewer, um, businesses are leaving, and it's beginning to look a little tacky, so, and as far as CPC is concerned, we met Tuesday night, did a few things, and, um, the fields will be before us this evening at nine o'clock. So, that's that, and that's that. No? Okay.
One other thing, um, we had a sort of internal meeting on the twenty-sixth, when was that?
A couple of days ago.
It was yesterday.
No, the day before.
About the RFP for the water study. And, um, that was with the DPW. We got a draft RFP that I'm looking at, um, that I'll send, I'll send all, I'll put some comments on and send it to you, but I'm gonna send it to Kevin in parallel to that. But essentially, it's a, a study to look at, sort of, the baseline, update the baseline hydraulic model for the, for the system, and then kind of do the, the capacity analysis, the what-if analysis for capacity, and hopefully develop a sort of standard methodology for the water department to assess, um, new developments for capacity and that kind of thing, so... They wanna get it out probably next week to a, a defined list of potential bidders, and hopefully award the contract, um, I think it was in April, yeah, April fifteenth, that's right, it was tax day, so... So, that's kind of what's going on right now with that, so hopefully, we'll be able to actually move that forward, cause I think we would like to see it particularly, um, as we start to look at the Drew Company, um, project and, and all of that, and Brad, Brad was there as well.
And where is this money coming from?
Well, part of it's coming from the Toll Brothers mitigation, and part of it's coming out of the DPW budget. And hopefully, it will cover the full study, we won't know that till we get pricing, and I think part of the idea was to lay out the baseline work, and then, you know, find out if there's a way to sort of parse it out, so that if, you know, we can get the, the vast majority of the work done. If the pricing came in high or whatever, or maybe we're gonna need additional capital to do it as well.
All right, thank you.
That people know that there is a new master plan being developed, and...
What's that?
That people, I think, are unaware that we are in the process of developing a new master plan.
Well, we haven't gotten very far yet, right now, we're trying to establish, um, sort of, the framework on how we're gonna do it with, and we just approved relatively small expenditure with the master plan consultant.
But we'd like people to know that we, that we are addressing.
It's in the process.
It's in the process.
It's in the process.
It's in, check's in the mail.
All right, um, it is almost eight o'clock, and time for our, um, public hearing on zoning amendments for annual town meeting, Greenbush.
Just give me one sec, though.
Yes.
Good evening. Can you shut the lights down a little?
All right, hang on one second. I move to open the portion of the public hearing for zoning, to amend the zoning for Greenbush Driftway area, to amend the zoning map, as described in the legal ad posted on January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, and amended on February twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we need to shut the lights out?
I don't know, what do you think?
I can see that.
Can we shut some of this off?
Yes. Whoa, all right.
That works.
I'm getting it off.
All right. It's up to you.
Do you want it off?
I don't care.
Yep.
Sure.
Good?
Okay.
Got it.
Go for it.
All right, well, thank you, uh, for having me tonight, and with me is Ted Brovitz, who many of you, all of you should know, uh, who's been, is the consultant that worked on this on behalf of the EDC, uh, to prepare the, the draft zoning for Greenbush Driftway. So, been in many venues, uh, EDC, just regular public workshops, before the planning board twice, um, so I don't think we're gonna get into the nitty-gritty detail tonight. Try to hit this at a high level, just kind of talk about the purpose of why we're doing it, um, kind of hit the highlights, and then maybe open it up to questions, obviously, from the board and, and the public. Um, and just by way of background, again, this has had fairly significant public process to date, um, so before this was even drafted, there was a public process for the vision plan, and then about a year and a half ago, there's, since then, there's been three or four public forums, uh, where we've worked with stakeholders and the public, and come to the board as well, so, again, tonight's kind of a continuation of that, um, and then the draft zoning in its kind of draft-proposed form has been available online on both the planning board website and the Economic Development Committee, uh, Commission website for about a month or two months, so, um, and we have, you know, we've received feedback, I've received both verbal and feed, uh, feedback in writing from, you know, board members, but also other boards and committees and members of the public, so... So, just by way of background, um, you know, why are we doing this, where did this come from? In two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, the Economic Development Commission, I'm gonna put my glasses on, uh, commissioned a study, commissioned actually a series of vision plans for each of Situate's villages, so it was not only done in Greenbush, but it was done in North Situate, Humrock, um, in the harbor as well, um, and these, you know, evaluation of his existing conditions, land use, market trends, it was analysis of what do we have now, and where do we wanna go. So, there was a vision session targeted for Greenbush, and, you know, and again, Ted, you were at the visioning meetings, I was not, predates me, but again, it was kind of charrette-style, open-house style, where, again, we directly asked folks, what do you, what do you want to see? And again, that's the genesis of, of where we are today. Um, and the ultimate goal, you know, from the vision plan was not just to create the plan, it was to codify zoning to enable these, you know, this type of development to move forward. Um, and again, it was, it was intended to guide development for the next series of years, next ten years or so. So, again, just to kind of reiterate that point, you have a vision plan, which is an aspirational document about how you want to see this area, how you wanna guide development over the next several years, and where we are now is the proposed zoning, and that, that is the way you take, you know, a vision into reality, is, is moving this into zoning. So, what we have on the right, the left is the vision plan, and on the right, we have our proposed zoning map. So, what, you know, what we have done, and what Ted has done on our behalf, you know, again, is trying to put those various things to get the components of the vision, you know, what do we want, where do we want, what do we want our building to look like, where do we want them, what kind of open space do we want? All of those things, you know, in order to get that style of development, you have to rewrite your zoning to, to achieve that development style. Um, so this is our, you know, again, just to dig in a little bit more on the purpose of the proposed zoning bylaw changes. This is a snapshot of our existing zoning map, uh, pretty busy, a lot going on, there's multiple base code, multiple base districts, multiple overlay districts, um, so what, again, this, I'm gonna try to do with my fancy PowerPoint skills, is an overlay, so you can see, you know, I'm gonna, I know, I don't wanna block anyone, but if you look at, you know, some of the kind of parcel boundaries here, I tried to overlay it as best possible, cause folks said it was a little confusing, to look at our old zoning map, and then look at this new zoning map, and try and line up the areas, so this is the best I could do, but you can really see, I mean, again, it's, we're talking about Greenbush, um, you know, a lot of this is already developed, or as a golf course, or as a transfer station, you know, or as open space, so it's not, we're not talking about a huge amount of change in terms of what can be developed, but, um, what, and, and some folks question, you know, why are there so many sub-districts, um, new sub-districts? Again, you don't want to, that's the purpose of this, is to kind of get at what you're trying to either develop or protect, um, so the different sub-districts, I think, relate, you know, and, and, get into more detail on this later, but, you know, you don't necessarily want the type of development that you're promote, trying to promote down at the old N B T A, down near the golf course, so you need those different sub-districts with different dimensional requirements and use requirements to get at, you know, the, to, the right kind of development character in each one of those areas. Again, the purpose of, of the bylaw is to require that new projects, you know, not existing buildings, existing buildings continue to exist like they are, this is not a requirement for an existing property owner, or existing business owner, this, just like now, you know, would apply to any new structure or new development, um, but to require these new projects to meet contact, context-based standards, what does that mean? Again, it's, you know, what the buildings look like, design guidelines, where they sit on a site, if we're trying to create this New England, New England Village feel, you know, getting things closer up to the street, you know, putting parking on the side, uh, but also sustainable site development, so enhancing the low-impact development standards, and, and things like that. And then lastly, you know, again, chartered by the Economic Development Commission, um, so one of the primary focuses was try, trying to enhance this business district, you know, certainly as this board knows, um, and a lot of folks in town know, we have, in Situate, we have a very limited amount of business and/or commercially-zoned space, so to, in order to try to minimize or lessen the, the burden on the residential tax base, we try to enhance the business districts that we have, so this zoning, um, does that, you know, again, it's trying to promote pedestrian-friendly areas, neighborhoods, where you want to go and shop, where you wanna go and walk around, um, you know, allow for a greater, uh, flexibility in development, we have some photos in the middle here, you know, again, and we've talked about at previous meetings, you know, more lively open spaces, so little pocket parks, you know, like what they're trying to do at the Drew Development, they have that courtyard area in the front, rather than counting random open space and parking islands, we're getting a nice little usable open space right at the front of the development, um, but again, it's, it's really intended to create, I think, attractive development, it's not intended to be burdensome, it's quite the opposite, intended to, to kind of stimulate economic development and create, uh, create a place, create a new destination.
Seems to me, it, 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 so doing this, you're creating the potential for greater value of all this property, too? In that, in kind of the look and feel that you're trying to accomplish here, too?
Yeah, I, I totally agree, and actually, um, and Ted can go into more detail on this, but, um, you know, this type of bylaw, and actually, this probably specific bylaw, is modeled after, you know, other towns in Massachusetts, um, that have very vibrant downtowns, you know, this is, this is why they do this, to try and, you know, cause again, our, the harbor, I mean, this is the kind of zoning that tries to recreate things like that, it's not trying to model some of your strip development, that I think, and again, what we heard come out of the visioning sessions is not what we want to see in Greenbush, if we have a limited opportunity to, you know, encourage economic development, we'd like to see it like this, rather than strip-style development that you might see, you know, pick-your- roadway, um, anywhere in New England, that's what we're trying to not do here.
We're trying to build something to last, you know, sustainable, not only from an environmental standpoint, but also from an economic standpoint, you know, we've got these spaces in the Greenbush area, including, you know, the, the, the Greenbush Village itself, that have, you know, been well-established for hundreds of years, and we're just trying to fit into that fabric the best we can, and add the, the better qualities of development, if we're going to allow new development to occur in those places, so, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's meant for the long term.
Um, and then I just have a, a series of slides, um, so if you, this is the zoning map, kind of broken up section by section, uh, we have the proposed zoning map on the left, again, the bottom right would be the vision plan, and here we have just, you know, examples of development that exists, so we have the Jacob Hatch Building, that's the Dunkin' Donuts, I believe, I don't drink coffee, um, that's, and then just, you know, the next slide is, again, the same area, but what are, what can you get through this zoning, what is, something, not, not the full universe, but just kind of examples of the types of uses and the types of buildings that you could build out, so... So, you know, again, much like you can do now, you can do, you know, multi, multifamily townhouse, mixed-use buildings. Again, this, this bottom example is actually an example from Cohasset, so we didn't have to go too far with the type of development that we're trying to model. Not quite sure where the, the top one is. But again, something that would definitely fit in Situate, and is, is that character that we're trying to, to go after here in this new development.
And just as an aside, that area in Cohasset, right next to the train, transit-oriented, it's just unfortunate that the parking is all in front of that
Correct.
building as opposed to in the back.
Yeah. I mean, they did a TOD-looking building with a kind of a suburban parking layout, so.
But the parking just doesn't.
That's exactly right. I mean, they did a nice job with the building, they've got residences upstairs, they've got a nice mix downstairs, it's next to the train station, but it doesn't, the placement is, is not right. But, but they didn't have much to work with to begin with, whereas we have more of a village center to work with in Green Bush.
They still could have reversed it if they wanted to.
They could have, yeah.
Yes, okay.
But there's room for more development there, I mean, along with the front.
So just looking at, you're going through these individual districts.
Yes.
And these are a result of translating the visioning plan to zoning districts to encourage certain kinds of development, to achieve that vision. So how did you, I mean, they, they look a little gerrymandered almost. So how did you decide, you know, that, that the Gateway Business District is different than the New Driftway Transit Village versus the, I don't know what that yellow parcel says. So how did you determine that that's how you would split them up? Or what's the, what's the, what are, what are the sort of significant differences between those, right?
They're, they're not significant differences, but they're sort of, you know, smaller differences. So the Jacob Hatch Building is a large commercial office building on one end of that district. You've got Dunkin' Donuts on the other, a small commercial building. So basically, on, on that small segment of the corridor, we see a mix of, sort of a horizontal mix of uses, sort of a medium scale, could be residential, could be commercial, that's supported by enhanced streetscape, which we really need in that area. But as you go into the Transit Village area next to the train station, the scale might change and make it a little bit larger with the Drew Project, which is bigger than what we're looking at there. When you get into the area around the Green Bush Village, it's smaller scale, mixed-use, residential, commercial space. The yellow is, is residential. That's basically where River, Riverway is and where James Landing is. And there's only a small pockets of opportunities for small-scale residential that's consistent with, you know, those types of developments. So, they're not major differences. I would say if there's anything major in terms of sort of distinguishing, it would be what could be a future business park next door, beyond the train station, where the transfer station is now, and then the further you go down the Driftway, obviously, that's more conservation with the possibility of some small boutique hotel at, at Widow's Walk.
So I guess to some extent, you know, it's pulling on what is existing, the existing character of these different sub-districts. Again, some of this is brand-new, so, you know, with the MBTA parcels, that, that's kind of a blank slate. But, you know, in the Green Bush Village Center, it's, again, trying to emulate that traditional New England village. The Gateway Business Subdistrict, kind of a mix. Again, you mentioned the Jacob Hatch and Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah.
But once you go down.
The other difference is that, you know, the Transit Village and Green Bush Village are really walkable districts, really meant to, we're sort of beefing up the, the walkability of those, those two particular areas.
Yeah, and this, this is.
There's distinctions between them, and there are distinctions of
Scale.
Scale, size, not necessarily of function, right?
No.
You know, they both can be multifamily.
Absolutely.
But the difference in the two districts is really the size of that multifamily from the other.
And to some degree, the, the types. We would allow, you know, cottages in the Green Bush Village, but we wouldn't want single families, detached single family up at the Transit Village, because it really doesn't fit in with the larger scale mixed-use and commercial that you are likely to get up there.
And the boundaries were generally created based on property lines?
It's all based on property lines, yeah, yeah.
Which is, and the mic now. The boundaries between one district and the other.
Well, in that case, it's really the train station, it's really the railroad tracks that divide really the historic Green Bush Village and parking lots today on the other side. So we, we, we cut off the top where the, where the Situate pipe is, and the sort of area between that and Stockbridge, and then that area in the transfer, that became sort of an opportunity for, you know, commercial, office, office and, and light industrial space.
Why would I want to, if I had a piece of development that ordered two of these districts, why would I want to take the most stringent as the criteria for, for the entire project?
If you were saddling two districts?
Yeah. Why would I want to take the most stringent?
Why would you want to take the most stringent?
I answer first.
I don't know, basically, it depends what you want to do, I mean.
Yeah, one thing that sits there and says, and I believe, I can't point out this actually, but it says if you're, if I've got a development, my translation, if I've got a development that basically spans two districts, then zoning for the strictest will prevail.
I'm not sure how that would come into play, because I think that all the boundaries are following property lines. So, you know, it may be that you own properties in both districts, but the parcels are divided between the districts. So I would think that, you know, those are hard lines. So if you wanted to do something, say, in the, in the business park, and you were saddling the Transit Village, you could ask for an amendment to that boundary. But I don't think you can extend it by just simply saying, I want to be part of that adjacent district.
And I think that, this is, that's some housekeeping that, again, I think some of our boundaries now have more of what you're talking about, where parcels might be straddled. And I think we tried to clean it up here and make it more of that hard boundary.
That's exactly the case. I mean, the, the commercial district is 1,000 feet off of, off of the Driftway to the north, and that bisects a series of parcels up and, up and around the Driftway. So we tried to avoid that with this by just simply following the parcel lines.
Just to, again, kind of get through this, so we talked about the Greenwood, Green Bush Village, Village Center. Yeah, we have the New Driftway Transit Village, which is the site for the potential Drew Project. This is one of Ted's, this is a gas sideways, but it is possible, they actually exist. This one's in Western Mass.
Built a nice terrace in front of it, and your people sit out and eat their lunch.
Yep.
As you sniff up the gas fumes.
Either from the cars passing, you're the, the.
Exactly.
So this is the, again, the business park subdistrict, so to speak. Again, the North River Residential neighborhood, so this is everything, or most, everything south of the Driftway.
Except for the, yeah.
And, again, a lot of this area is generally built out, so we're not looking to replace people's homes. This is just the type of development that would be allowed. And there are some infill parcels, you know, down in that district. Then a huge, you know, the Driftway Conservation Recreation Area, so we have, you know, the golf course, we have other existing open space resources, so that, not much of a, really no change there. So, you know, we go from happily playing golf to catching fish. But, you know, and again, I believe in the vision plan and through these meetings, we have talked about potentially trying to at least, for lack of a better term, spruce up some of the amenities. We have, you know, small boutique hotel, or maybe a restaurant at the Country Club.
Actually, there's good fishing on the, on the golf course too, by the way.
Oh, there is.
Take your kid up, and get some great big perch out of the pond there.
So, coming to the close, and I just wanted to throw up a few questions. I'm just going to read these if you don't mind, so folks at home can, can hear this. And these are the ones that have, you know, come up most frequently to me. And if there's obviously any other questions from the board, the crowd, you know, more than happy to answer those too, but I think these are pertinent. So, you know, will this, what is the purpose of this new zoning? Will it increase the allowable density in the area? That is not the intention, and that's not, you know, what we have done here. I mean, the proposed changes do not ultimately change what you can do or the ultimate build-out within this district. Again, Steve, I think you kind of hit the nail on the head, it's more of an aesthetic look and feel to get the style of development that we want. We're essentially trying to, I think, you know, and forgive me, Bill, I know you were on the, and Anne, you might have been on the board as well, when you implemented the Village Business Overlay District. I think that was an attempt to kind of raise the bar a little bit in terms of what we could do in this district. I think this is just an attempt, again, just to raise the bar a little bit more, again, to get the style of development that we want to get, that's consistent with the publicly vetted vision plan. Another question, are you proposing an actual development? There's some confusion around what this is. And this is not a development project, and the proposals to change zoning, which are the rules and requirements by which properties develop. There's existing zoning now, and we'll look, you know, this is a series of proposed amendments to the zoning. Property owners are allowed to develop their properties, just as they are now. And just as they are now, they'll be required to follow all applicable bylaws and regulations. You know, anyone that's done a project in town, or any town, knows that it's not just zoning you have to contend with, there's Title V, there's conservation, you know, a series of kind of regulations that they'll still be required to follow. Are you proposing to remove all of the existing zoning districts and overlays? No. You know, so there's important environmental protection, water supply protection bylaws that will remain in place. And just, you know, examples of these, the floodplain and watershed protection overlay, water resource protection, Salt Marsh and Tideland Conservation District, all those will remain intact, and developments will still have to comply with the requirements of all of those. And then lastly, and I did.
None of those requirements have changed?
None of those have changed. So those, those overlays, or if, I think they're probably all overlays and not base districts. Well, the Salt Marsh is base. But anyways, any of those, all of those will, will remain in place and still apply to potential projects. And then lastly, you know, the proposed zoning changes, can they be viewed or construed as anti-business? And as I mentioned just previously, no, quite the opposite. Again, we're trying, these changes are actually based off similar bylaws found in, in areas that, again, Ted has been working on, that they're trying to enhance or kind of bolster their business districts. So that's what we modeled this off of. So hoping that it can, you know, enhance this, this business district. Again, that's, that's all I had related to that. I did want, I didn't include a slide, but also wanted to note, and we discussed last time I was before the board, and at the public meetings throughout, you know, both in the summer and in December, that there are a few other items that we, as, in this package of proposed changes, there's elements in the Village Business Overlay District that we have pulled out, related to the fair housing standards and the low-impact development that would come out of Green Bush and live within the base codes, so that it applies to a kind of a broader range of projects. But we have, you know, discussed that, and that's also in the, you know, the proposed suite of amendments online, available online. So with that, I'll leave this one up.
All right. Comments from the board?
Maybe a question for Ted, and this is probably more application than it is bylaw, but we recently had this submittal for the Drew Company Development of the MBTA parcel. And the question I have is, and it's, they, they actually govern by the existing bylaws, right, not by this particular bylaw?
Right, existing bylaws, yeah.
Right. The question I have is, if we had those bylaws in place, how does that particular development sort of meet the intent of those bylaws? Or how close is it, if you will?
I, I actually tested it, because I thought, you know, it'd be a good idea to, to test it against a real proposal. So it actually stacked up really well. It's got 16 units per acre, which would be allowed, you know, by special permit. It's got active open spaces, particularly since we've talked about the idea of changing that sort of green strip there and right away to a public plaza, common. They meet the parking requirements, in fact, they exceed the parking requirements, and they could each probably manipulate some of that in different ways. They've brought the buildings right up to the street, they, they meet the ground-level requirements for commercial use. They're under the height limits. So I think by and large, in just a quick overview, I think it's, it's pretty consistent with what we're proposing to do. I mean, there are certain things I.
All the things you just said, I guess, are they in the existing zoning requirements as well? Are some of those different?
Do they meet all the requirements of the V-Bud? I think.
No, no, what I'm saying is, the things you just listed off there, but for, and they propose to do them, but, but for the changes in the zoning bylaw, would those be part of what's required, so to speak?
So, yeah, a good example of that, I think, would be the public open space. They're proposing to do that as part of their project, but here it would be more of a requirement, as opposed to just something that they're offering.
Under the current bylaw, it's not a requirement.
Yes, yes, so they, they could just do.
But things like building heights are currently requirements
Yeah, yeah.
in existing bylaw, as well as in new one, right?
But there's, there's nothing in terms of the quality of open space in the current bylaws, so that's a big difference in this one. And the fact that we negotiated that, or in process of negotiating that idea, the concept of the common out front, is something that would be one of their choices if they had this, this proposed zoning in place. The other thing they are doing is also a part of the package here, is having street-side parking, taking basically that, that section in front and putting on-street parking. That also is an option under the new proposed zoning, so.
I think that was also some, an objective of the current zoning too, right?
That was something we talked about them doing, it wasn't, it's not part of the standards today.
I thought it was. We, we often talk about that. Okay.
Ted?
I don't have anything in particular at this time. I mean, there's a, obviously, we're doing like the bird's eye view tonight, which I think is really good to get on the record, and kind of for the public that's watching on TV or going to listen later on. I think that this is a needed bylaw update or revision, and I'm supportive of most of what's, what's contained in here. I think what's going to be interesting is kind of getting this ready for town meeting, and I'm surprised, actually, there's not many people here tonight in the audience. But I think that there is a lot of, just what I hear around town, there's a lot of kind of misconception about what, what's contained in this document and what we're trying to do. And I think that we have to do a little bit of PR and kind of outreach, maybe in addition to having the formal public hearings, to try to make the message clear and kind of let people know that we're, this is something that's positive for, for everyone, I think.
Can I just clarify? This is the formal public hearing?
I said in addition to the formal public hearings.
Okay, all right.
Becca?
I've sat through a lot of your presentations, and I thought that one was really, more understandable than the other ones, especially for the public.
Me too, yeah.
I thought it was really good, I thought the map was very easy to understand, so I think you guys are, you know, really close, so I thought this was great for something you could do in a town meeting.
Great, thank you.
Hey, Bill?
I'm all set.
Andy?
I agree with Ben that the concerns I hear is that this is a development, and it's not, it's a bylaw. So I think that we need to kind of put that out a little more, that we are not conditioning a development, we are conditioning a bylaw. And I think that's a huge difference.
Yeah, there's a lot of material online, right? I mean, we've got, obviously, the current bylaw, the proposed bylaw, but we also have a lot of the presentations we've done in the public forums, as well as, you know, the original visioning process. So, you know, we hope, encourage people to go online and get that information, you don't have to read through the whole bylaw, you can get sort of a snapshot with some of these previous presentations. And we could probably do something like, like a fax document, just sort of fax about what's this all about, and no, it's not a development, here's what we're trying to do. Might help people sort of get a better sense of what.
This is much clearer than what we have seen
Yes.
before.
You get inundated with everything that's out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do. There's a lot of stuff out there, so.
Just add two points. So to your point, Steve, of, you know, either development that's happened or development's in the queue, how would this bylaw potentially, would it allow it, would it, you know, how would it change it? I think it's important to note that this is, you know, what's proposed is not a drastic departure in terms of what you could still do. I think there's projects, you know, whether it's Six McDonald Terrace, or the Brewery, or Drew, the Drew Project. I think there's projects, you know, whether it's Six McDonald Terrace, or the Brewery, or Drew, the Drew Project. You can do it now. You could do it under this bylaw. And I think, you know, they both are probably good examples of something that could go under either one. But again, some of the kind of more, I guess, beneficial, or at least in terms of what the public's going to get out of this, I think you, you are able to require or encourage that more with the new bylaw. Again, it's, it's not punitive. It's not, we're not drastically trying to bring in new amounts of development. It's really just kind of a fine tuning with, again, more guidance. A lot of, I think it gives a lot of guidance and a lot of flexibility. And then secondly, you know, completely open to the concept of kind of more informal opportunities for folks to come out and comment and engage on this. So I would kind of defer to you as to what you think would be the best way to do that.
I'll open it up to the public, public hearing. Anyone have any comments, any questions, any concerns? Go ahead.
Colin McNeese, Dunbar Lane. I'm Vice Chair at EDC. Just because we're talking about high-level overview and creating a record that people can lean to, I just want to make a statement that EDC has been working on this for a very long time. Obviously, we're supportive of it. I don't think, I can say it anymore than what Brad and Ted have said very well. What strikes me though, Steve, is you point out the Drew Project now, could they do it? Yes. What they're doing is a good project. And what this will do will facilitate those good projects coming. Because we've seen bad projects proposed for that site that could also be done under the existing bylaws. If we put this in place, we're getting that better chance of getting the Drew Project. Even though they could do it now, this will give us a better opportunity to get what we want to see without creating additional restrictions. So I think it's exciting to see, we don't have a lot of developable space in Situate. So if somebody's going to be building here, when they do it, we hope they do it right. And I think this is going to give us the tools to allow you to make them do it right.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I think that was kind of the major point we made last time, too, is this is, and I think the way you presented it here is, you know, there's a lot of work that went into the vision of how we would like to see the Green Bush Village develop. And so this is an attempt to put cornerstones in place, if you will, to allow that to happen in that, in that particular direction, right? Sort of put bumpers on it, if you will, to some degree. But I think that's the real value of what you're proposing to do here, is to, you know, translate the vision of a lot of different people into enough concrete information to drive the development in that direction, basically. To the extent that it is going to be developed. And obviously, as everybody said here, we don't have a development we're putting on the table. All that is, is a set of guidelines around how that might happen.
I think there might be some misperception. When we did the vision plan, you're drawing out, you know, conceptually what might happen over 50 years. I think sometimes people sort of misinterpret that to mean you're proposing a development. And really, it's an exercise to get a sense of, you know, collectively, what do people would like to see in the long term in these particular areas. And it's really helpful when you're drafting zoning because you translate those concepts, generally speaking, in terms of building placement, in terms of density, in terms of integration of open space and streetscapes into these, this package of zoning. So I think that, that maybe where some of the misconception lies is that you've got this big vision plan and people think, oh my gosh, a lot of development that's going to start taking place as soon as this goes into place.
Right. And I, exactly right. And it's only saying, this is what we aspire to. And are there changes in our current bylaws that will get us going in that direction?
It's such a useful exercise to get us to understand where we want to go. But it's a little bit, it's a little dangerous in the same time because people tend to misinterpret it.
Greg?
Greg Morse, 167 Tech Factory, Pundrav. I see one of the, one of the downfalls of the current bylaw being that there's no ratio, I guess, for residential use versus proposed commercial use in the Village Business Overlay. And so you have projects that take advantage of the generous density of 16 units per acre residential, and they put in some sort of minimal commercial component just to satisfy the requirement. There's buildings that aren't mixed-use buildings. They're purely there for density requirements.
That's true.
So I think it's important with the new bylaw that there be some sort of requirement or some sort of ratio aspect built in to help promote the goal of doing this, which is to increase our business space, increase our business tax base.
That's a good point.
Very good point. Anyone else? Yes?
Sharon Carrington, 15 Jenkins Place. We were very upset by the parking that's going on by the brewery. And I wasn't sure if I heard that this plan was to encourage more on-street parking, which in our area has been very dangerous because children come darting out between cars and emergency vehicles are having trouble getting through because of the narrowness of the street. Did I mishear it?
We were talking about the Drew Project up on the new Driftway as far back goes. We, we encourage where there's opportunity on-street parking. But when you get into narrow areas like Country Way and certain segments of Country Way, it's, it's a lot more difficult to do that. So the new Driftway's a much wider right of-
So, so in particular to your area, Jenkins Place and Union Street, we have actually, we met with a group of the neighbors. I think we had six or seven of them here. We had Public Works, police. And we are, you know, we're working on a solution to that. You know, I think it's going to be some traffic and safety improvements, you know, whether it's stop signs, crosswalks, designated on-street parking. So we're trying to, where it can potentially cause a problem, or where a use causes a problem, we're trying to think of a solution. So we are actively working on addressing that intersection. But again, what we're trying to do, and the goal of this, is to create a safer, more walkable and more pedestrian-friendly area, not, not the opposite.
I'm just not sure that I understood you encouraging more on-street parking versus what else with this plan?
Again, thinking back to a traditional New England village, you do have some on-street parking. But again, we have to think of that holistically when the whole district, where it makes sense. So it's not that we're going to be creating parking everywhere on the street, but where it makes sense, yes, we'd encourage it. But again, it's, it's not going to be everywhere. And it needs to be site-specific, and it needs to have, you know, traffic and safety in mind. And again, that's why, you know, the brewery, while successful, and we love that it's successful, there was, you know, some traffic impacts. And that's why we're looking at specifically, how do we mitigate it, you know, for your, for your neighborhood? Just as an example.
I think the notion of on-street parking we were discussing in, in the context of the Drew Development on the MBTA parcel and the fact that you could carve back part of that, the street itself, and create accessible on-street parking, much more like a village, without impacting the through-traffic coming back and forth. Whereas where you're talking about, that's almost impossible to do that way just because there's not enough, you know, breadth of street scape there to do it, right? So I think that's kind of what Brad was getting at. It's sort of in the right place. It gives you that typical New England village feel and still gives you the, sort of this, you know, the safe-walking areas and all of that, and the safe-traffic areas as well.
But, you know, down in your neighborhood, you know, we need to get the parking a certain distance away from the intersection, put in the stop signs, put in the crosswalks, and make it, you know, safer for pedestrians. So again, that's something that we'll be working on.
And to have it so that two cars can go through, or at least a large emergency vehicle can get through. Because there are times when an emergency vehicle cannot get through. And we've had people that needed to have the emergency vehicles to-
All right. Is there anyone else? This will go before town meeting. It's a change. It's not a huge change. It's just sort of has been pointed out, codifying what we have to make it better for the future. And we have held a lot of meetings about this. This was not done in a vacuum. And the Planning Board is not a developer. We don't have any, you know, we're not developing buildings, okay? But we're putting together the parameters for people to come in to develop their property so that it's done in a way that benefits all of us. And parking is site-specific. I know that we have accepted an application for someone in Green Bush that may possibly alleviate your concern, okay? It's coming. So this is exciting, and it's not anything to be afraid of. Change is difficult. It is very, very difficult. And I have heard, people have said to me, stop the development. There's too much development. You know what? If you own a piece of property, you have every single right to develop it. It's not up to any one of us to say, no, you can't. But what we are saying is, you will develop it within a framework that makes sense for the town of Situate and the people who live here. That's what we're aiming for. We want it to be done well, and we want it to be done right. Anything else from any, Karen, do you have anything?
I think you've said it all. So it's up to the board if they want to actually vote to recommend it to town meeting tonight. We, next meeting, we'll actually vote on the formal reports for all the zoning articles. But it's, it's up to the board if you want to vote to recommend it to town meeting tonight.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
No, you could just use those words, and you'll, you'll actually have the, the town meeting report next time to vote on.
Shall we close the public hearing and then go for a vote?
We'll just wait and go tomorrow night, our next meeting.
Okay.
That way we've got them all together.
Okay.
You can do that.
All right. So we close this particular, okay, read that.
I move to close the public hearing for the zoning article to amend zoning for Green Bush Driftway area as written per the light, which filed with the town clerk on February 12, 2019.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have another public meeting at nine o'clock. So, thank you very much, those of you who have attended. Yes, no?
Yes, real quick, just to follow up on the public kind of outreach component. This will go on Planning Board and EDC website, the presentation tonight. And if we do any kind of outreach opportunities or open houses, we'll make sure that's on the website. We'll do it on the Facebook, and we'll do a wide, as wide a net as we can to make sure we get folks.
I would suggest that either through EDC or Planning or whomever, that we have at least one more outreach to the public before town meeting. Because this, you know, it's five weeks out, and, you know, people have a collective memory of about two weeks. So let's see if we can come up with something, okay?
Who, who is presenting this at town meeting? Present it?
I mean-
You, you guys be doing this?
Yeah. Okay, it'll be read by a selectman. I don't know the exact-
Yeah, but will you have an opportunity to do a brief, sort of similar overview, or?
I'd, I'd hope we could do that, yeah.
I, I think that's going to be the key, is to be able to lay that out. And you suggest maybe a handout that-
Yeah, it might be a good idea to have a booth at town meeting, too. I don't know if you do that or not, but it's helpful for people to be able to ask questions before they get in and start voting.
The other thing you might-
We've done that before.
The other thing you might think about doing in terms of a handout is, you had a laundry list of what it means and what it doesn't mean. And I think that if, if that were handed out, that would be sufficient to let people know, this is what, what we're doing and what it isn't.
Yeah, like a fax, frequently asked question.
Right, that, yes.
We could put something like that together.
All right, perfect. All right. We're going to take a five-minute break. Order. Thank you very much. And the next item on the agenda is a continued meeting on a site plan administrative review, Town of Situate Track and Athletic Fields Restoration.
Good evening.
Good evening.
No, I can just hold it up. I'm fine.
All right. So, yes, now if you'll identify yourself and tell us what's what. We had some concerns from the last one, last meeting.
My name is Martin Novak. I am design principal with Actibitas. We are the firm retained by the town to do the design for the track and athletic fields up at the high school. Sean O'Connell at my right is our project manager, and also full disclosure, resident 700.
Thank you. All right, what are concerns from this last rendition?
I could point out a few things that we've made, based on our, our previous discussions. One of them was to add some lighting on the walkway leading up to Cushion. So we've added two pathway lights, pedestrian-level pathway lights. Same light fixtures that we'll have down in the middle of the site. Secondly, we've added bike racks. We've added nine bike racks, right in the middle of the site. Third, we've added two more handicap-accessible parking spaces in this location right here. And then finally, just one thing that we failed to know in our previous hearing, the existing lights from the baseball field, they were installed roughly six, seven years ago. They're being relocated to the natural gas field.
We relocate where?
To the natural gas field back here.
Oh.
It's really tucked in the back.
What, what is that field you use for?
That field, right now, the field's in kind of tough shape. But it's currently used for practice soccer, it's used for- Sorry, Garrett Myers, Chairman of the City Council. Do youth organizations usually play games, generally?
They play games at night?
Well, train time, they will play games.
And what's, what about stall that?
Woods.
So it's not lights that are going to, we're going to hear from residents?
I would hope not.
Does it tap back right over to Alcoa?
No. There's a lot of woods in there. A lot, that backs up to, what is it, Utility Road?
I believe so, coming off of 3A.
Yes.
What kind of lights are those?
They're the existing lights from the baseball field. They're manufactured by a company called Universal Sports Lighting Systems. They're HID lights, so they're not LED. But we will be reducing the amount of fixtures that are currently on the baseball field. We, we just don't need that many fixtures to safely illuminate that pitch, so.
I would suggest that part of the, if you're going to relocate and reuse them, that you ought to be going to LEDs as opposed to leaving them as HIDs.
Well, the lights over at the baseball field were graciously donated by the Reedy Family Foundation. So early on in the process, we had a conversation with them. Rightfully so. They spent a number of years working, running golf tournaments, running other fundraisers, trying to build up funds to have those lights installed. So they, they weren't excited to hear that the lights were going to be taken down to have new LED lights put in. So the agreement that we have with the Reedy Family is that we would do our best to find a way to reuse them. And it seemed to make sense, since the entire facility is going to be lit, to try to use them to lift that last remaining portion of the natural gas field back.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a way of extending the use of a fairly energy-intensive lighting fixture, right? As opposed to something that doesn't use much-
As opposed to LED, correct?
Yes. I understand that, you know, some effort may have gone into it, but-
There is, there is-
The entire world is switching from these kinds of lights to-
It is moving in the direction of LED, absolutely.
I mean, the entire country, really.
I think one of the things that we can communicate with Universal Sports Lighting to make sure that when they're erected, in the future, should the town want to, we can switch, switch out the fixtures and go with the LED.
Who pays the electric bill for that?
Right now, I believe the school. I don't think it's the school, because they're not in charge of the-
Yeah, it must be the town. It must be the town.
Yeah, but it's the town, a net energy producer, so really, you're probably not paying anything in reality.
Because of the solar farm?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're supposedly, we're a next supplier. So someone might pay it here, but we're paying money in there, in theory, if that's true.
I don't know.
I'm just counting for that, I don't know.
Well, it also comes along with, you know, HID lights also take more maintenance than LED lights as well. So somebody's got to get up there, repair them as well. But it just seems like, it feels a bit like make-work, but...
Okay. Anyone else?
Does it cost big money to change them out?
Excuse me?
Does it cost big money to change them out, LEDs?
You mean to do it now, or in the future?
Do it now.
To do it, to do it, well, I mean, if we're gonna do...
You would do it before you put them back up?
We would, yes.
It'd be a lot easier that way.
It would be. And also...
Better way of phrasing my question.
I guess the intent is to try to reuse what the Reedy family spent so much time and energy funding, you know. So if we aren't going to use those fixtures, then basically everything that they funded is no longer going to be used.
Well, isn't most of the money in the stanchions and the installation and all that, as opposed to the actual fixture itself?
The fixtures are expensive. The foundations are probably the second most expensive thing. The poles aren't that bad themselves. And actually, we need to replace the poles, because the existing ones are completely encased in concrete at the bottom. So we're replacing the poles, but we're keeping all the mounting brackets and the fixtures, and the ballast box down at the bottom.
You can't just change the light bulb?
Can't just change the light bulb.
All right.
What, I saw a set of comments about handicap accessibility. So can you walk us through those and how they got resolved?
Have you seen this?
Oh, it was in my...
I thought I forwarded it to them.
Yes, I believe we did.
Yeah.
So, do you have your, did you move this back in?
It's fine.
Okay. When I read through it, it said this appears to be provided on the plan. So, all the comments are in number two, correct? Item number two. No accessibility provided to the press boxes. They note that this appears to be provided in the plan. There is accessibility to the press box via handicap lift. So the press box will be located right here, at the top of the bleachers, will be a handicap lift, taking people up to the top of the press box. Can I see it better in the rendering? So the press box is right on the number 13, diagonal squares, a handicap option. No accessibility provided to the interior concession stands and the appliance and equipment provided inside. They note this appears to be provided in the plans. So I did meet with the commission on disabilities, and they provided a LED supporter, and we're in favor of the project.
So the places where they say this appears to be provided, are you confirming that all of these places, they all are provided?
The only thing that I question is access to the gazebo. I don't know what he's referring to there. We're not installing a gazebo. If he's wondering about the pavilion down here, that's all handicap accessible in there. It's just an open, country area. So really, basically, we've provided universal access throughout the site.
Okay. And what, just two extra handicap places, you just put them in where you found a spot?
Yes, we, we, sorry, we put them in at the...
Did you leave that up?
Yep. So high school's over here, high school's in the museum.
So that's where kind of home plate used to be?
Yeah, home plate is right here currently.
Uh-huh.
So it's right over here.
So where there were three before, there's now five?
Correct. Three proposed, now five.
Right.
Yeah. And three non-conforming existing.
Right.
Are right over here. And that's why we switched them out to ready spots in the allocation.
So the other items you asked, inquired about last time were trash and waste receptacles.
Yeah.
And so, that can be a condition. The other item you asked about was percent coverage in an impervious area. The site already exceeds, you know, the, it exceeds 15% and it did, it has, so I developed a condition where they're, and they're doing this anyways, but they're recharging the amount above 15% of new impervious area. But it was already, when the school, when the schools was built, it was already exceeding the requirement.
So the amount of new impervious area is roughly $39,000 square feet. We are recharging runoff from approximately $98,000 square feet. So we're going above.
Above and beyond.
I hope.
And the other one was TSS removal. Been asked about that last time.
Total suspended solids. So we're not treating the walkways. The parking lots and the drives, all are operating under the existing stormwater management system in the parking lots that do treat and provide TSS removal. But since the walkways on site will not be treated, and we've discussed that with both rec and the schools, there's no suspended solids to remove.
You're not treating the walkways?
Fields won't be used in the winter.
Oh, so nobody's, this is going to be all shut down?
Yeah. The building, the concession stand will be shut down for the winter, blown out. The restrooms will be shut down, locked up for the winter.
And so all of the sort of walkways won't be accessible to people in the wintertime? They're gated off or something?
They're not completely gated off. I mean, if somebody wanted to come out and walk around, you know, suppose they could find a way out to site, but...
They'd have to wear snowshoes.
Yeah.
Couldn't get, couldn't get, you know, a lot of restricted access.
Yeah, no.
Can you just remind me, what are the walkways made out of again?
Asphalt, asphalt and concrete.
Okay. Bill?
I'm also.
Yeah, I'm also for cycling.
The only other open items, I think we had, I have a note that says operating hours. Did we confirm what the operating hours are going to be?
No, that still needs to be determined with the school and the rec department.
All right, let's see. And then we said trash and waste, which you said you wrote a condition on. What is the plan for trash and waste?
We will have numerous trash and recycling receptacles throughout the site. Typically, we would have anywhere between two to three for each facility. Two to three pairs. And each facility, I mean, each individual field, yeah.
So these aren't permanently located receptacles? They're movable, you're moving them around?
No, they're permanently installed into the ground. So we would have them...
Does that apply with, like, the football stadium, too? How do you deal with the trash?
Yeah, there might be one here, but we would have, typically, we would have them by the exit, so people walk, leaving the site, we'd be able to drop the truck, we'd obviously have them over by concessions, we would have them over by the visitor's stand as well. We'd have them by the stands on baseball. We'd have one located over by the team areas, and then similarly for softball.
And that would be a school or a town responsibility to collect that?
That would be a town responsibility.
Set?
Yeah.
Okay. Is everyone on the board, all set? Anybody in the public?
[laughing]
Okay. Karen, do you have anything else?
No, I mean, I've, conservation is meeting on Monday, and we'll likely close the hearing, too. They have reviewed the stormwater, and they're, they've satisfied all the pair-review comments, but I have put a couple things in here for stormwater as well. And we've created some conditions that we've worked out, based on different aspects of the site.
Okay.
And did conservation, they address the construction management?
They have an...
Stormwater management for construction?
Yes, and I've included it in here, too.
Okay.
I've included basically a draft condition that they have to follow SWIP plan for construction and long-term operation and maintenance plan. They have to meet all those conditions.
Okay.
As part of conservation, we've also included areas for stockpile areas, sedimentation ponds, to make sure that there's no erosion off-site. I know that's a hot topic.
Yes.
Hot topic.
Okay.
All right. So, I have some comments, but not on the site plan, so we drew this first, and then we can talk about it.
No, if you have comments, yeah, let's do it now.
Well, I do have several comments.
Okay.
One is that, this is a planning board, we're not a checkbox. We kind of almost, I feel like this is an afterthought to come to us with this proposal. I feel that we should have sat with Recreation, DPW, other people, other major stakeholders. This is a huge project, coming out of taxpayer money. And one of the things that really concerns me is that the basic component of this is turf, which CPC cannot pay for. So I assume that's the $1.6 million that you're asking for the town?
Yes.
So, I'm a little concerned about how much money that is, and the fact that CPC wants to take on added debt. As a citizen, I don't think that that's a good way to do business. But the more concerning thing for me is, we call ourselves sustainable Situate, and yet we are putting an artificial environment in the middle of town. And I have, and as a planning board, we have to see the long-term plan. I do have a question about the long-term effect, and I know that people really can't tell you. We could only assume, or maybe try to tell us what we think is going to happen.
In terms of what?
Well, like TSS and other kind of runoff. But the other thing is, I went back and I read the old master plan, and I read the open space plan, and this does not fit in either one of those plans. And that's our charge, is to make sure that we fit things that go into our plan. So I don't, this is a huge precedent for the town to take on. I think it's a precedent for the planning board to be associated with. And I know that this is a long-term project, and we have waited a long time for this. I know you say that we have, we need 16 fields, and the open space, it tells me that we already have 16 fields. I know we only have 15 now, since we lost one. But I do have a grave concern over the amount of money that's being spent.
We actually have six full-size fields in town.
Okay, so we're...
So we have other fields.
Okay.
But only six of them are full-size.
Okay. So it says that, yeah, it says, whatever, that we had all of these, we had 16 athletic fields. So athletic fields does not necessarily mean full fields?
Purple dinosaur is an athletic field, and you can't fit anything on it.
I used to play baseball on that, but that's okay. Nine town beaches and one of the 300 annual programs. So I know the big thing has to do with, we want to keep children engaged. I understand that. However, we're putting stuff in the middle of the field that is not sustainable for me. And so, as we address this climate change issue, and I know that we don't have enough water, we can't sprinkle, and we don't have enough rain, so the climate is not going to adapt to us. We need to adapt to a changing climate. So we're a seaside town, maybe we need to get back to the ocean again, and away from fields. I don't not support this, I just have real reservations about putting this much money for a town meeting vote.
I would say, I appreciate your comments, and I would say that in no way is the planning board endorsing the economic decision here, right? Our role in this particular application is to do a site plan administrative review, right?
Yeah.
And so, the decision, and I agree that this is a very large investment for the town to make, and it's sort of mortgaging some of the future of the CPC fund in order to do that. And those are different issues than site plan review, but I appreciate your comments.
That's what I wanted to make sure that I said it before or after.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I think that's, I think that's spot on, right? I just want to make sure we're sort of clear that a decision on this site plan administrative review is just that it's the site plan administrative review. It's not an endorsement of an expenditure of any money on it, of any kind, by the planning board.
Do you want me to talk to financing of this?
No.
No.
Yep.
Nope. Yes, did you say yes?
Oh, I'd be interested in it, but again, it's not...
I could talk about it at length.
No, I don't need it.
Change your minds in about 10 seconds.
If you can give me a $30,000 overview in 10 seconds, that's perfect.
Fine. You're borrowing, we're borrowing just over $3 million. We have about 5.2 in cash. We actually have with, with encumbered funds, almost $9 million in cash sitting in the books. So the other $4 million makes about 2.5% a year.
And so you got 5.2...
In cash. We're going to borrow about just over $3 million if it's approved by town. Of that $3 million, at the last bond auction, we issued at about an average of 2.85, current yield, okay? If you deduct inflation from that, the real, the real yield was almost zero. That means we're borrowing at zero. At the current rate of CPC's inflows, we could pay off the bond in three years, not 10, not 15, three.
Is what per year?
Three. So...
What's the tenor of the bond?
Well, the tenor will be up to Jim and Nancy, as how they feel the rates, the best rates apply for me. And I could borrow 2.85 for 10, 15 years. I would borrow, I would go with the whole $10 million all the way, because you're borrowing for free, okay? But to be flexible, given that short-term rates, the shape of the yield curve, short-term rates are so low on a real-term basis, on a real basis, that it might be better, also politically, it might be better if we do in fact do initiate a series of bands, short-term loans, and only, and in fact pay it off in three years. Economically, you'd be better by borrowing all the way.
What would be the hit on CPC annually?
Hit for what?
Hit, how much?
Pay the bonds?
It would be, in real terms, nothing.
No, you're going to pay the bonds, so...
You're going to pay interest, when you're making, CPC...
Bond is principal and interest.
No, I understand. It's not a mortgage. So just so you know, I actually come from debt capital markets, okay? So, the way bonds work is, you can, you don't have to pay them off every year. You could pay it off at the end. It's not a mortgage when you pay, you know, principal at the end. Or you can issue a series of bands, you can pay part of the principal at the end of the year. Or if you have money, you can buy it back on the open market, okay? In this case, the way the town will probably do it is, they'll probably issue a series of one-year notes, because we don't even know if we're going to need to use all the bond, just like the school didn't have to use all $4 million of their bond, all right? So when we come back and we say, "Oh, we're going to have $3 million out for 10 years," we won't. We'll probably pay it back in three, okay? We will have, at the end of the first year, CPC will have 2.5 mil, I anticipate CPC having 2.5 million dollars of cash on the book, okay? Not including the $4 million we have, that's accruing 2.5% interest, interest on top of them. CPC is a... CPC is a much different fund than anything the town has, it's effectively a special purpose investment vehicle that makes a return, and that return more than covers any type of interest, and in this case, the real cost of interest is as close to zero as you can get. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Not really. Because you gotta pay it back, right? So, if you're borrowing 3 million, you're gonna pay 3 million back, right? Plus interest, right? And so, if you have a fund that generates interest and it can cover the interest, you're still paying the principal back, right? And, and so, if you gotta do that over three years, then it's a million dollars a year, right?
But we generate-
Right, and you, so you're, you're committing the, the fund to pay that million dollars a year off the top, right? And then the remaining capital that's available is available to CPC funds. So, all I'm saying is, what you're doing is you're shrinking the available capital for three years, if you pay it off in three years, or if you pay it off in five, it's five. You're, you know, first out's gonna be the bond payment, right? And then you're gonna have what's left to go to CPC activities, and not just recreation activities, right? Affordable housing, open space, right?
CBC doesn't work that way. CPC 10%, we are statutorily required to put 10% aside for affordable housing, 10% for open space, and 10% for historic. On top of that, if you go online and look at our bond stress test, you'll see I also put another 10% aside for undesigned stuff. And so, we stressed it out, on top of that, we set aside another 5% for admin funds, which we almost never use, like the most we ever use is 4,000, but we set aside 90,000 every year, which also goes to undesigned fund. We generate on an average year, we don't use 2 million, 3 million bucks every year, that's why when we did Lawson Green, we went down to zero in the fund after paying out 2.9, what was that, two years ago here? Now, we're back up to 5.1. So, CPC, just on the, and we didn't even include the state match in our bond stress, okay? So, CPC generates more than enough money to not only pay this off in three years, but also do most of the projects we want to do. Fact is, we've only had two major projects of any size, and how many years does CPC have been there?
202.
Right, two. That's 2.9 million, Lawson Green, and this, everything else has been left to us all.
Right, and it's a, it's a discrete tax on every citizen in situate, right? When you say we generate it, that's who's generating, right? Every taxpayer is generating it.
I understand that, but that's something that's voted in, and if you choose, you can do that as well, if you want to push that. And in fact, if you again take a look at the bond stress test, in there I've included a 1.5% levy as opposed to 3% levy, right? Because most towns, what they do is they start at 3%, and then they vote down 1.5, like Duxford, right? So, if you have a look at the paperwork on our website, you'll see on page two of the bond stress test, it actually has 1.5%. And guess what? We're still, even with 45% being reserved, we're still generating more than enough money to pay it in four years, okay? So, with interest rate being at zero-
And leaving what other capital?
What's that?
And what, when you say, we can pay it in four years?
Leaving 45% left, not including the state-
45% of what?
Of a levy.
Of a 1.5% levy?
Yeah, that's what I-
How much money is that?
1.5?
Yeah.
It's, um, 3%, I think it was 1.9 million, so...
So, half of that.
Yeah, about 900 dollars, cool.
So, we're getting 900,000 in a year, is what you're saying, at a 1.5%?
That's 1.5, and then we get a match on top of that.
Right.
And we get interest on top of that.
Yeah, but you're getting the basic tax at 1.5% is $800,000, give or take, right?
About 100 up to 100.
And if you're to pay off 3 million over four years, that's roughly how much per year?
What's that?
How much is, how much is the nut for to pay 3 million dollars off over four years?
It's a million bucks, because we have 4 million sitting, it's generating 2.5% that covers the interest.
I'm not talking about the interest, I'm talking about the principal, you're saying you're gonna pay it off in four years, right?
Yeah, so it's a, if you have 3 million out, you pay out, let's say, 1 million bucks a year.
Okay.
So, you have enough.
And you're calling in 800,000 a year?
Eight to 900, plus the state manager.
Right. So, it sounds like you're committing, that's all I'm saying, it sounds like you're committing the fund to fund this as the primary investment for CPC.
No, because we're still allowing for 45% on top of less than that, so the 800, we are allowing-
10, 10, 10 is what you're allowing, is 10, 10, 10, right?
Right, 10, 10, 10, 10 for undesigned, 5 for administrative.
Right.
So, there is plenty of money in CPC to cover all this.
Hot off the press advisory voted on the project tonight.
Oh, did?
Eight to none. In support.
Alright, um-
Well, again, we're not voting on the-
We have nothing on that.
No, I know.
No, we're not, okay.
We should be quite clear about that.
Yes. We have a motion.
Based on the town of Citrus Track and Athletic Fields Restoration Permit set at 606 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, assesses parcel 32-9-A dated 1/7/2019 with revisions through 2/21/19 by Actititas Incorporated, the Town of Citrus Recreation Department Operation and Maintenance Plan, Citrus High School Track and Athletic Fields Restoration, Citrus High School, 606 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Citrus, Mass., prepared by Actititas Inc., dated 1/7/2019 with revisions through 2/4/19. In testimony provided, the planning board applies that the requirements of the Town of Citrus zoning bylaw section 770.6 site plan standards of review have been met to a degree consistent with the use of the site for the purpose permitted in the regulations of the district in which the land is located. And to approve the site plan administrative review for Town of Citrus Track and Athletic Fields Restoration with the following conditions. One, the project and all site work shall be in substantial performance with plans entitled "Town of Citrus Track and Athletic Fields Restoration," permitting set at 606 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, assesses parcel 32-9-A dated 1/7/2019 with revisions through 2/21/2019 by Actititas Incorporated, except as may be modified to meet the conditions below. Additional changes beyond condition modifications will require further approval of the planning board. Two, approval is contingent upon all local approvals being obtained from the Town of Citrus. Materials and details of construction shall meet all the requirements of the DPW, Board of Health, Conservation Commission, Fire Department, Building Department, and Commission on Disabilities. With the site plan administrative review requires approval, permitting or licensing from any local, state, or federal agency, such required approval, permitting, or licensing is deemed a condition of the Town of Citrus Planning Board's approval of the site plan. All necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to the construction. Three, the project shall comply with applicable ADA from Massachusetts Architectural Access Board requirements. Five accessible parking spaces will be provided through relocation of three existing accessible spaces on site adjacent to the track and baseball field, and in addition of two others. Four, emergency access, public safety access to the field shall be provided, double swing gates at each field are being provided. Final detail shall be coordinated with public safety officials prior to finalization of construction documents. Five, the planning board agrees for waiver for the requirements of flagging all existing trees over 12 inches in caliper spaces under section 775, 770.5I of the zoning bylaw, as all existing plant material within the limit of work is required to be removed to facilitate full-size fields. Six, additional detail on the abandonment and relocation of the sewer line, schedule and potential impacts to Cushing School, information on bypass pumping, monitoring, and alarms, and review of the proposed new sewer line by a professional engineer to verify that the slope will be sufficient must be provided to the satisfaction of the DPW at least one month prior to construction, are required. Engineering drawings for the proposed sewer relocation, including a plan and profile view noting slopes, inverts, details of construction, and recommending sequencing of construction to include bypass pumping are required. CCTV inspection of the existing sewer line to remain must be included in the contract documents at the general contractor. Inspection to occur at the beginning of the construction phase with coordination and inspection results provided to DPW Sewer and Engineering Divisions with a copy to the planning office. A pre-construction meeting specific to the sewer relocation is required with the contractor, design engineer, and DPW Sewer Division at least one week prior to any work on the sewer relocation. Seven, all replacement of or connection to town sewer drainage and water mains and effort, what is that, effort, that says?
Pertinences.
Pertinences.
Pertinences. On the Town of Citrus property shall be performed according to the specifications of the Citrus DPW with inspections performed to assure compliance with the town's rules and regulations. Eight, proposed sewer manholes outside of the paved roadway shall require watertight frames and covers. Nine, the applicant indicated that there will be no cooking equipment on site and a grease trap will not be necessary. There could be plug-in machines such as a popcorn or coffee machines not provided by the applicant. 120 volt smoke detectors shall be installed in the concession stand and in the announcing booth. Additional detail shall be provided on the operations of the permanent bathrooms and concession stand. It is assumed that these facilities will not be open year-round. If there is a change in this, a modification of the site plan administrative review may be necessary, and the planning board shall be notified.
Do you want to take a break and somebody else? Ben, start with number 10, please.
10, stormwater is being reviewed under the Conservation Commission's notice of intent. Stormwater runoff from the fields is being directed to a subsurface infiltration system. Stormwater runoff from the walks is generally being discharged to grass to swale. All conditions of the notice of intent are incorporated as conditions of the planning board's site plan administrative review. 11, as the site is in the Water Resource Protection District, the design engineer shall certify that the artificial recharge system will capture rainfall displaced by the amount of new impervious surface exceeding 15%, and the groundwater will not be degraded. 12, as the site is in the Water Resource Protection District, no toxic or hazardous materials associated with the fields and tracks shall be stored on site. 13, chain link fences are being used on site, they will be black powder coated vinyl. A vast majority of the lighting for the proposed project will be downlit. Proposed sports lighting system requires a few fixtures to be pointed skyward in order to illuminate the underside of athletic balls. This is a safety requirement for the proposed sports lighting system. 14, signage for parking and overflow parking shall be provided as necessary with coordination between the Recreation Department and School Department for parking locations. 15, an additional, an addition of two bollard lights has been conceptually shown to provide lighting for the walkway through the woods to Cushing School, as this is overflow parking. Safe level of lighting shall be required. If this results in additional bollards beyond two to provide safety, then additional bollard lights are required. Bollards shall be of similar style to bollards existing on the property. 16, trash refuse recycling receptibles shall be provided in locations that the applicant and the schools will determine. 17, a pre-construction conference will be required prior to the start of construction with representatives of the DPW Conservation and Natural Resource Officer, applicant, and its design representatives, the site contractor, and the town planner. 18, prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference, a schedule and sequencing of construction must be provided to the town planner along with the stormwater pollution prevention plan. All clearing and earth moving shall occur only while erosion and sedimentation control measures are in place. Stormwater control during construction shall be maintained according to the SWIP plan. Stormwater control after construction shall be maintained according to the Operation and Maintenance Plan. 20, DPW and the town planner shall review the proposed staking of the landscaping prior to planting to review the locations of plants do not conflict with utilities. 21, bicycle racks shall be provided for the fields in a location accessible to the fields as shown on the revised plans. 22, as-built drawings of the buried infrastructure in the project shall be provided to the DPW and planning office in addition to other requirements of the applicant. The as-built shall be stamped by a professional surveyor licensed in the Commonwealth and the supervising engineer or landscape architect responsible for ensuring compliance with the approved plan. All grading and landscaping must be complete prior to the as-built submittal. 23, construction work shall not begin prior to 7:00 AM on weekdays and 8:00 AM on Saturdays and shall cease no later than 7:00 PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal federal holidays. If modifications to the construction hours are required, the applicant shall request this through the town planner. 24, the town planner is to be notified upon completion of construction.
Second for discussion?
Second.
Further discussion?
On number nine, the bottom, says if there's a change to this, modifications, site plan review may be necessary, and I would say will be necessary.
Okay.
There was one typo, I think Ben said it right, but on 13, that's black powder as opposed to power.
Then there's another typo too, on number five. I don't, after 12-inch caliper, we don't need spaces there.
Anything else? I'll accept a vote as amended. Second. All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry?
Very much.
Gary, hi, nice to meet you too. Just a made cumulative, I don't understand the terminology.
So, that's basically how much we'll have.
How many of these? Yep. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
That's tax revenue.
Aye. Thank you.